Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you could all come in and take a seat, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is Monday, April 24th, 2023, a little past 7:00 PM, and I'm calling the Town of Wareham Annual Town Meeting to order. Just so we're clear for some of the people that are coming in now, the non-voter section is the last two rows in the back to my left, where one of the tellers is standing. So, non-voters, right here, right there, where that tall gentleman is standing. And the reason that I do that is just to, when I look out, I need to know who are the voters and who are not, and the same applies to the tellers as well. So, we have, under our bylaws, a so-called zero quorum. I note the presence of more than zero voters, so we are official. With regard to the warrant for the annual town meeting, I will note that the town clerk has certified to me that the town warrant has been lawfully posted in all the correct locations. And if we could, before we get started with our business, have a pledge of allegiance, if we could stand, to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, before we get started, a couple of procedural issues. This meeting will be governed by Town Meeting Time, Robert's Rules of Order, to the extent each are adaptable to our town meeting, my rulings and authority pursuant to general laws, Chapter 39, Section 15, and the traditions of this town meeting. In keeping with our tradition, I would entertain a motion to limit debate to five minutes for proponents or petitioners of an article and two minutes for any subsequent speakers.
So moved.
There's been motion made and seconded? Is there any discussion? Seeing no one standing, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. It's passed unanimously. So, before we get started, I'm required, under the bylaws, to call a attendance of the department heads for the town. So, starting with accounting, administration, assessors, cemetery, conservation commission, council on aging, community development, board of health, municipal maintenance, natural resources, animal control, and harbor master, police, school department, EMS, town clerk, human resources, treasurer, collector, inspectional services, library, sewer, veterans agent, and zoning and planning. I think I heard a couple here from different directions, so we'll take that. The first article on the warrant will be Article 20 of the annual town meeting warrant, and this is the article having to do with Swift Beach. And ordinarily, the bylaws call for us to have a so-called lottery system for the order of the articles at the town meeting, but I have a certification to me as moderator, which the Board of Selectmen voted pursuant to bylaws Division 1, Article 1, Section 2, to certify that Article 20, terminate contract 2022-001, sewer, Swift Beach, citizens petition on the 2023 annual spring town meeting should be taken up immediately with an explanation that Article 20 may have important fiscal consequences and should be heard first, and there was a vote of the Board of Selectmen, 500, with a certification by the clerk of the select board. So, having that in mind, I will entertain a motion on that particular... Oh, I'm sorry. Before we move to that, I apologize. I would like to give an opportunity to the Chair of the Finance Committee, the Chair of the Select Board, and the Town Administrator to give brief opening statements. And when each of the Chair of the FinCom and the Chair of the Select Board, if you could also introduce the respective members of your committees as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Almost lucked out there. This evening, we have members of the Finance Committee. On my left, seated, is Tom Hannan, Julie Moran, Norma Scoggan, Jerry Stefanski, and Tom Werden. For me, this evening, ladies and gentlemen, is a little high and a low. High is I enjoy being with you this evening and doing this kind of thing, and the low, this is my last one. I've done this for nine years here in Wareham. I've spent a lot of... Thank you. Thank you very much. I've been doing Finance Committee for some 20 years now in some three different communities. I absolutely love it. One, because I don't have to report to anyone but you people. The lovely lady sitting next to me is the Chairman of the Selectmen, and we talk. But the camaraderie and the concern that we all share together makes my involvement in this that much more better, and I have nine wonderful years here in Wareham. We've tried to do a lot of things with our budgets and try to accomplish all the objectives we've had for our community, to make it a better place. Through the administration, we've been able to do a number of those issues. There are many left to be done, and I charge you all, because we decide here this evening where our tax dollars are spent, I charge you all with being concerned and compassionate about Wareham. Thank you.
And so now, we recognize the Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone here for attending this town meeting. I understand there were some problems with not enough parking. That's awesome. Tonight, we have the responsibility of making some important decisions that will affect our entire town, and your presence here shows us how much you all care. I've always believed that our community is strongest when we work together. And this evening, we need to work together to decide on our annual operating budget, as well as requests for capital expenditures for different departments of the town. We take this business up every year, and many months of cooperation in review and discussions have gone into these final budget requests. You will also hear requests to support community amenities, including a total renovation and reconfiguring of Bayview Park in Onset Village. This rebuilding will complement and enhance the village, which is already a vibrant place to live, and to work, and to enjoy. You will also hear articles that will enable and encourage private investment on our Main Street Village area, an area that I think we can all agree needs a makeover, and we're not starring on HGTV, unfortunately. We have the opportunity and the need to stimulate private investment through carefully thought-out rezoning articles. I think we can all agree that we have had an extraordinarily challenging couple of years, but we have come through together, and we have met those challenges. And even though we may not always agree, let's continue to work together to make sure that our town prospers and meets the needs of every citizen. I am sure that those of us here tonight will do the best we can for Wareham with our votes on these articles. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're here from Mr. Sullivan, the Town Administrator.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to be a part of Town Meeting. Looking back over the last few years at all we've gone through as a town and a society as a whole, it's good to see some things returning back to normal. The very popular Oyster Festival will be returning May 28th this year. The Summer of Love Concert Series is back for music and dancing at the refurbished bandshell in Onset. As some things return to normal, we're also experiencing change. Our community lost the iconic Lindsay's Family Restaurant, a true Wareham institution. Costs are rising, yet it's difficult to fill much-needed open positions. In many ways, the return to normal and navigating changes are what Town Meeting is all about: honor the past, plan for the future, and work on the issues that are present today. Sometimes those ideals can conflict, and you'll rarely get a room full of people to agree on which the most important issue is. So, tonight, you'll see articles that are a mixture of all three topics. Some examples are proposed zoning changes that can help Wareham's future, a budget that plans for the immediate, community preservation revenues being set aside for historic preservation, and purchasing land for conservation. The articles tonight have all been either written and/or reviewed by Wareham Citizen Volunteers in the form of elected or appointed officials. Now, these articles come before you, and there will be a robust conversation, and not all will agree. The main point to remember is that all of you are here tonight because you care about Wareham and want it to continue to be a great place to raise a family, run a business, enjoy our beaches, waterways, parks, new dog park, playgrounds, golf course, basketball, pickleball, recreational trails, and other community spaces. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Before we proceed with Article 20, I note there's some folks standing in the back. If anyone back there are voters and they wish to vote on anything, you need to be seated in one of the seats here. There are some seats forward. I know that some folks don't like to be in the front, but there are some seats up here. So, if you wish to vote and you wish to have your vote counted, you need to be seated in one of these areas other than the back two rows of this section on my left. So, we have Article 20 before us. Is there a motion on Article 20?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town exercise its right under Section 1.51 of Contract 2022-001 to terminate the contract titled Installation of Low Pressure Main and Further that the town consider all options to repair the gravity sewer lines in Wakanowa Avenue, Murphy Street, Pleasant Street, and Bayview Ave.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded on Article 20. May I have the vote and the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted 7-1-1 to refer to Town Meeting.
May I have the vote and the recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board voted no action, 500.
Thank you. And before, this is a citizens' petition, and before I recognize whoever might be speaking initially for the petitioners, looking at this particular article, my understanding is that the funding for this contract was voted at the fall town meeting and that the contract for this particular work has already been signed by the sewer commissioners. So, my ruling on this is that if this passes, it passes as a resolution. So, I just want to state that at the front end because I sense that there are many people here who are interested in this particular article. That being said, is there someone from the petitioners that wishes to be recognized? Just step up to the microphone, and people that do speak, I have that same issue, you can lower your tone. People that do speak, if you could state your name and your precinct.
My name is Jeanne Chappett Welch from the Swift Beach Neighborhood, District 1. I present tonight the following motion to the town meeting on behalf of the 312 residents who signed the petition and for the many additional homeowners in the town of Wareham who will be affected by this project townwide. There are several compelling reasons why we submit the motion tonight. At the spring 2022 town meeting, the Sewer Department presented Article 15 and stated that the grinder pump project installation costs, the ownership of the pumps, as well as the cost of the grinder pump service and repairs would be covered by the town of Wareham and at no cost to the homeowner. The affirmative vote was to move forward on the project based on the information presented at town meeting last spring. Subsequently, in Article 17 of the fall 2022 town meeting, the funding article language was not clear to residents that the $2 million being funded for engineering is related to grinder pumps because the terminology used was low-pressure sewer line. It was also noted that they hoped to use this model of grinder pumps for the entire town. Minutes from the August 21 Sewer Commission meeting stated that the Sewer Department Director would go door-to-door in the area of the Swift Beach neighborhood and conduct two public meetings to let the area homeowners know how this project would impact them. There were no door-to-door visits nor were there written communications. There was one public meeting held in September of 2022 at which there was no answer to the first question asked. That question was, will the project cost individual homeowners any money? The answer to the question from the town was, I don't know. You'll have to call an electrician and find out how much it will cost each homeowner. This is contrary to the information that was used at the 2022 spring meeting when the affirmative vote was taken. Residents have lost confidence in the decision to replace the current gravity sewer system with a low-pressure sewer line, aka grinder pumps. This is a case where even if the best intentions were in place in the spring of 2022 to replace the current system, the financial impact to the individual homeowners and the choice of the best system for the area has since come into question by the neighborhood, by the homeowners, and by residents of Wareham. We strongly request that the town review alternate systems to repair the gravity system rather than replace it with an invasive grinder pump system. Three significant questions have been asked by residents and town officials about the motion. What is the cost to each homeowner to adapt their home to the grinder pump? How much has the town spent so far on the project? And is there a penalty or breach of contract to the town if they cancel the contract? Number one, we've received quotes of up to $10,000 per homeowner for just the electrical panel update to run the pump, plus the cost of a plumber and a landscaping repair. Number two, no money has been paid yet to the contractor for the project, which is now on hold, and there are no outstanding invoices from the contractor, as far as the information we've been able to ascertain. Most importantly, the Swift Beach residents retained the services of an attorney to be sure that they reviewed the contract with regard to any penalties or breach of contract. We received the following statement from the attorney, and I apologize for the legalese, but this is what we got. We do think it is worth emphasizing to the town that the contract explicitly allows the town to terminate the contract. The contract states, Section 1.51, "This agreement may be terminated by the owner," which is the town of Wareham, "upon not less than seven days' written notice at the town's convenience. If the case of termination, in the case of termination for convenience, the town shall be responsible for amounts due to the contractor for work already performed through the date of termination..."
Ms. Welch, you have 30 seconds left.
"...provided the contractor shall submit a request for payment." In summary, there is no contract dispute, there's no penalty for canceling the contract, and in summary, a yes vote will allow the town to terminate the contract and to install the grinder pumps and conduct a cohesive study to determine how best to repair the system rather than replace the system. A yes vote will allow the town to cancel the contract and repair the system instead of replace it. Thank you.
Thank you. If I might, I should have said this at the front end, and I apologize. We do not want to, even though it's tempting, applaud, boo, hiss, whatever, listen respectfully, and then others will listen respectfully to you as well. So, I'd appreciate holding the applause and booing or hissing or whatever. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on Article 20? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your precinct.
Brenda Exstrom, Preise, Brenda Exstrom, Preising 2. I just would like the moderator for clarification to explain to this audience of voters, when you say that it's going to be, that, I'm sorry, what was the word you used? That it's going to be a resolution? Could you explain to them that that means that if we vote in favor of this, it still means nothing?
If I might defer to Town Council on this?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, Brenda. I mean, Ms. Exstrom. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. So, what have we got here in front of us? We have this motion. I move that the town exercise its right under the contract to terminate. So, let's just start with the termination part, and Brenda, I will, I think I probably need to give a little bit of wind-up before we get to the answer. The contract does provide a clause for termination for convenience, and what that section says, I'm trying to bring it up right here, is the agreement may be terminated by the owner for convenience. And it goes on and states that there are certain conditions under which the town or the owner, as it says in the contract, may be responsible for some damages. So, question number one, is there a right to terminate the contract for convenience? The answer is yes. So, now, moving more closely toward, I think, what Ms. Exstrom's question was and Madam Moderator's statement was. Madam Moderator accurately categorizes this as a resolution. Now, why is that? I don't want to turn this into a Law Review article or Fox or CNN or whatever you watch, but there's this thing called separation of powers. You sitting here tonight are the legislative branch of town government, which means you get to pass bylaws, vote on budgets, and so on. The other branch of town government is the executive branch. Ordinarily, the executive branch of town government is the Board of Selectmen, although in this case, it's a little bit different. As I see Ms. Exstrom nodding her head, as many of you will recall, several years ago, Town Meeting voted to pass a special act to transfer operation of the Sewer Department from the Board of Selectmen to an elected Board of Sewer Commissioners. So, for purposes of the analysis, I'm going to give you, the executive branch is the elected Board of Sewer Commissioners. They are the ones who run the Sewer Department, not the Board of Selectmen. Okay, so legislative branch, that's you, executive branch, sewer commissioners. Under the law, each branch has its own powers. Under the law, the executive branch, in this case, the Sewer Department, sewer commissioners would have the authority to award and execute contracts. So, that brings us to this motion. What happens if Town Meeting votes, how many people we got here, Margaret? 400?
400.
Yeah, let's suppose we have a 400 to 0 vote saying, let's cancel this sucker and do away with this bad idea. I mean, that would be a very strong vote, certainly strong advice to give. Would that vote on its own cancel this contract? And the answer to that is no, because the legislative branch, the executive branch, is the one that has the power to cancel the contract if that is in fact appropriate. So, does that mean, I saw a gentleman sort of shrug, kind of angrily, and I understand, you know, does that mean that your attendance and your vote, should you choose to express it tonight, is pointless? No, absolutely not. The purpose here of a resolution is to give political advice to executive branch bodies. And so, I would never go so far as to say that any expression of opinion that you offer tonight would be pointless.
That's not what he said.
It's clear under the contract, and the motion correctly cites to it, that there is a provision in the contract to terminate it for conveni, pardon me, for convenience subject to certain possible costs, mobilization, you know, if they went and bought a whole bunch of pipe. Frankly, I will tell you, I don't think I'm giving away any state secrets here. Frankly, I'd be surprised if the contractor had gone and incurred those kind of costs because I can tell you at a meeting with the sewer commissioners that I attended back in February, that it was strongly recommended that the sewer commission notify the contractor that this contract should be put on hold, and it's my understanding that the contractor was so informed. So, frankly, I would be very surprised, you know, and if this tape ever comes into evidence, that's good.
Mr. Bowen, I hate to interrupt you, but I'm going to, no, no, I'm going to, because it's 7:30. So, procedurally, let me just say what's going to happen, because we are getting back to Article 20 after we take care of some procedural matters. So, there is a special town meeting which is posted for 7:30. So, I will, what I'm going to do is I'm going to entertain a motion to recess the annual town meeting.
Oh.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So, we've recessed the annual town meeting. I'm going to open up the special town meeting, and then we're going to get back to where your votes are, so stand by. I'm calling the Town of Wareham Special Town Meeting to order. Again, it's April 24th, 2023, 7:30 PM. Again, the warrant for this special town meeting, I've been advised by the town clerk, has been duly posted in the correct locations. So, at this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to recess the special town meeting to...
So moved.
Whoa, 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 let me just, you guys are ahead of me, all right? So, recess the special town meeting. We will go back to the annual town meeting to the conclusion of Article 20, and at that point, I do have to go back to the special town meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? So, Town Council?
I'll try to pick it up a little bit here.
No, no, I'm not, I wasn't hinting at that.
No, no.
It was 7:30.
And I apologize. So, I think where I left off was the sewer commission, it's my understanding the sewer commission advised the contractor, hold off. And you look at the contract language, it talks about, you know, they can recover certain costs. They've been told to hold off. So, like I said, if this tape becomes evidence, Mr. Contractor, Mr. Judge, if you're listening to what I'm saying, I'd be very surprised if a reasonable contractor went out and ordered a whole bunch of pipe and mobilized a whole bunch of stuff when you've been told to hold off. So, where does that leave us? You can vote against the resolution, that's your right. If you vote for the resolution, you're expressing your opinion to the executive branch body that has the power to make a decision on the termination for cause. That's what this article is for tonight, and that's where you are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, I just wanted to clarify that, I just want the people in this room to know that even if it is a 400 to 0 vote, that that does not mean that it's done. that even if it is a 400 to 0 vote, that that does not mean that it's done, that they would have to maybe still go to sewer commissioner meetings or put out pressure that way. But even in light of it, just like the Deacon School that wanted to be the community center, the executive board said no. And despite two positive votes at Town Meeting, they took that off the table. So I just want to warn you all. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak to Article 20?
Good evening, Madam Moderator. Peter Titlebaum, Precinct 3. I rise to speak in favor of the article, not because I think that the folks in Swift Beach are ever going to get happy news about what's going to happen out there. You've got a failing sewer system that's deep in water. I don't see how it's possible to sustain that over the long term. However, there are myriad sewer issues in this town that people do not know about. We do not have a sewer master plan. We do not have a sewer capital plan that tells us as the voters how much money we can expect to spend over the next 10 years or so. I want to say that about 10 years ago, fairly soon after I first came on the board and the Selectmen were the Sewer Commissioners, Selectmen Slaven and I were bouncing around the notion that there was about $100 million bucks in costs that people could face over the next 20 years. We were talking about a failing entire sewer system in Swift Beach and a failing entire sewer system in onset. Those are big-ticket items. Those are 30, 40, $50 million items. And at this point, we don't know what those costs are today. We don't know the additional challenges just the pipes face. We don't know the challenges that the sewer, the water pollution control facility faces. I think the Sewer Commission and the Sewer Department need to take a step back from executing anything at this point.
30 seconds, Mr. Titlebaum.
And work instead towards developing a comprehensive plan that we can all understand, we can all plan our finances around. And I also think that they need to take a look at how they're going to pay for it. The state allows you to do it via betterments if it's an entire replacement system. So I don't understand why we would want to have all the ratepayers pay for a betterment in one small neighborhood.
Time is up.
Thank you. Please support the article.
Mr. Slaven.
Thank you. Basically, this will probably cause me a little trouble at home, but let me go ahead and say what I have to say. The Board of Selectmen made no support either way, simply because we had real concerns about what our liability for the town was. Speaking with Town Council, which he's explained today, if the Sewer Commissioners went ahead and did what they were supposed to do and notified the contractor to stop, then our exposure is minimal. As far as I'm concerned, there's been a complete lack of, I guess, really just coming forward and talking to the residents and really hashing this out. There's so much misinformation as this went along that really is just unacceptable as far as I'm concerned. Now, there is just no way that this should go forward the way it is. Peter mentioned the costs. We're probably looking, I'll give you a figure you won't want to hear, but realistically, over the next five to 10 years, somewhere in the range of $140 million to fix our system. If you look at over the Cape, it's one of the towns of the Cape is about to pass at their Town Meeting a $200 million water pollution control facility. If you look at the local town of Hingham, they have an $8 million override pending for the town. This is a real problem. The state provides a lot of different funding available at the federal level, but to go through with this particular program, the way it was put together, the way it was forced on people without proper knowledge and understanding, there's no way that I could ever vote for it. If the Board of, if this comes to the Board of Selectmen.
30 second warning, Mr. Slaven.
I would vote to cancel the contract.
Gentlemen standing at the mic.
Bob Scanlon, Precinct 1. With regards to the grinder pump project in Swift Beach, it was stated that the grinder pumps would not be installed in any of the driveways. But on plans, many of the grinder pumps are in fact located in driveways. These driveways would need to be excavated first by the contractor to install the pumps, and then once again by homeowners to make the necessary electrical and sewer connections from the home. In addition, there are many shared grinder pumps on the plans as well, and yet there's no indication as to which homeowner would be responsible for the cost to run the shared pumps. Typically, grinder pumps are used when a gravity sewer system isn't possible. We already have a gravity sewer system for which we paid a betterment, and we would like to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen at the microphone.
Thank you. Joseph Vendetti, 51 Wankinko Ave. And I also own property on 55 Wankinko Ave. I'd just like to comment on the misinformation that's been circulating in this issue. The sewer on Wankinko Ave can be repaired by a competent contractor. This type of work is done every day. The sewer on Wankinko Ave is not 17 feet deep, as stated repeatedly by the town. The sump pumps do not cause failure of the sewer system. These are facts. Residents paid for the installation of this original sewer system, and it needs to be maintained by the town. Not to get repetitious, but the town has not issued a notice to proceed with this contract, and the contract does have documents that state that we can cancel them at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady behind you at the microphone.
Hi, Patty Delaney, Precinct 1. The Town of Wareham Sewer Director and Commissioners have now stated several times at Sewer Commissioners meetings that the cost of upgrading homeowners' electrical panels, excavation, and plumber costs to hook up to the grinder pumps, and electricity costs are to be borne by the homeowner. They are now saying that each homeowner will have to own the pump. This is not what was voted for in Article 15 of Spring 2022 Town Meeting that funded Contract 2022-001. And this is not what the taxpayers of the town wanted. The taxpayers would like the town to cancel Contract 2022-001 and repair the existing gravity-fed sewer lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it, oh. Yes, sir. Gentleman at the microphone.
Jim Akabachi, I think it's Precinct 3, but it's somewhere in Wareham. I'm pretty sure.
We'll accept that.
A question to whomever, through the chair and to whomever might be able to answer it, whether the system is replaced or repaired, I've heard the word, but it's never been defined, betterment. Will there or will there not be a betterment if the system is repaired? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to answer that question? Anyone from the Sewer Commissioners that can answer that? Evidently not. Gentleman at the microphone.
Ryan Churchill, 63 Bayview Street. Just a point of order of sorts. I think if you look back at all the documents, from the architect to the contract to what we're seeing here tonight, there is no Bayview Ave on Swift Beach. It's been Bayview Street for the 50 years that I've lived there.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. Is any further discussion? Yes, sir, at the microphone, please.
Kevin Kars, Precinct 1. I just, alluding to the previous speakers, is there anybody here from the Sewer Commission who can speak to this article at all, pro or con, or what their thoughts are going forward? Thank you.
I can, I can ask if anyone from the Sewer Commissioners wishes to speak. I cannot compel anyone to speak. Is there anyone from the Sewer Department or the Sewer Commissioners that wishes to speak on Article 20? I would say I don't see anyone standing, so I, again, I can't compel people to speak or compel people to come here to speak. Is there anything further to be said on Article 20?
Howard Smith, Precinct 4. As some of you know, I ran Smith-Suspull service in town for 46 years, so I dealt with a lot of this stuff. I installed septic systems, I repaired them. I did sewer lines, I did water lines. So I think I have a little bit of knowledge. Ever since this project's been going around, I've been asking a lot of questions. I haven't gotten many decent answers. From what I understand, most of it seems to be because we're having a lot of infiltration, water coming in from the ground into these systems and through the pipes, leaking pipes. Well, as far as I know, if you have a leak here, a pump over there, a pump over there, and a pump over there is not going to fix what's here. And if God himself came down and told me they would, I would not believe him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please, yes, ma'am, at the microphone.
Haley Cabral on Pleasant Street. The contractor does not have the homeowner's permission to do this work on their property. This would be a requirement prior to starting the work that hasn't been discussed with the homeowners. A group of Swift Beach residents have spent months trying to get real answers, have been stonewalled and not allowed to speak at the Sewer Commissioners meetings. This is not an acceptable solution. The Sewer Department needs to repair the system that we have already paid for betterment for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anything further to be said? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Salto-Lamach here. I'm Precinct 1, Swift Beach. Seems that this project has now turned on into something that has not been voted on. The Sewer Commissioners now demands people on Swift Beach, the homeowners that are already on public sewage, to start paying to continue to be on it. The laws of Massachusetts state that landowners already hooked up on public sewer systems need, that repairs need to go to assessment and spread the cost out for all users. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Gentry, I'm in Precinct 2. And the Sewer Commission or the legislation for the sewer, I think, have too much authority in our town. I can't even get an answer for why my sewer bill went up $50. Would you actually, it went up 100 for the whole year. That's a lot of money to go up for each person who lives in Wareham. That's a lot of money they raised. So nobody will tell you what it's going for and where it's going to, so I definitely think this should not be going through until we can get answers.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on Article 20?
Oh, I think we're good then.
Yes.
I was just going to say, by, judging by the amount of applause we've heard here and the lack of communication from the Sewer Commission, I'm going to ask to move the question.
There's been a motion made and seconded to move the question. It's not debatable. All in favor of moving the question, which means we go directly to the vote if it passes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. We're moving to, moving the question on Article 20. The motion is, I move that the town exercise its right under Section 1.51 of Contract 2022-001 to terminate the contract titled Installation of Low Pressure Main and Further, that the town consider all options to repair the gravity sewer lines on Wankinko Ave, Murphy Street, Pleasant Street, Bayview Avenue. It's got no error, Bayview, Bayview Street. All those in favor of the motion on Article 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. It's passed unanimously. So at this point, we will be returning to the special town meeting. So with regard to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda. And basically, what this means, if this goes through and there's no holds, that the, that the consent agenda articles will pass without further discussion. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
As Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Articles S. 5, FY24 Revolving Funds, and approve Article S. 6, Peg Access Receipts to Wareham Community TV.
Second. There's been a motion made and seconded on the consent agenda. So let me just read the particular articles that are in the consent agenda. If there's anyone that wishes to have a discussion on either of these, please just signify by saying hold. Approve Article S. 5, FY24 Revolving Funds. I don't hear anyone speaking on that. Approve Article S. 6, Peg Access Receipts to Wareham Community TV. So I see no one standing or placing a hold on that. So I will entertain a call for a vote on the consent agenda.
Madam Moderator, I'm sorry to interrupt. It was just with the consent agenda, can we have in the motion that we are transferring, as in the article in the motion put up there, $247,645.71? Again, that number's 247,645.71.
Having that information, is there anyone that wishes to have any further discussion on that? Seeing no one standing, I'll call for a vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying nay. So Article S. 13, Article 6, Density and Dimension Regulations. Before we get started on this, it refers to a planning board handout, which I understand was available at the door. So for purposes of acting on this, you want to make sure that you have the planning board handout on Article S. 13. That being said, is there a motion on Article S. 13?
Madam Moderator?
I move to approve this article as written in the planning board handout.
Is there, motion's been made and seconded to approve this article as written in the planning board handout. Before I get to the first speaker, I need to hear the report and recommendation of the planning board, because this is a zoning article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael King, Precinct 3, on behalf of the Wareham Planning Board.
If you could speak a little bit closer to the, to the mic.
To Article 6, Density and Dimensional Regulations, Zoning Bylaw Amendment. The planning board held a public hearing on the article on February 27, 2023, and continued to March 13, 2023. The board voted 600 to recommend the amendments to the bylaw as presented.
And may I have the report and the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
S. 13. Sorry. Yeah. Right. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as an important first step in the transformation of the Wareham Village Subdistrict into a village center, which will offer Wareham residents a vibrant place to live, work, dine, visit, and explore. These proposed changes to the zoning bylaw, along with the forthcoming rules and regulations, will help attract the kind of responsible and community-sensitive development to support the rebirth of our village center.
May I have the report and the recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board voted five-zero-zero to recommend favorable action.
Is there anyone here to speak for Article S. 13? Is there any discussion on Article S. 13? I see no...
Could you explain to me how this is related to the redevelopment district? I thought it was basically housekeeping changes.
Yes, those are housekeeping changes, but part of it supports the redevelopment. But much of it is, over the years, it appears there were a lot of typographical errors, lack of capitalization and consistency. So, that is really what it covers, but the focus is to help support the further articles.
So, what are the specific changes that affect the redevelopment district?
They are... They're outlined on the first page of the handout, sir.
What are they?
They're numbered one through nineteen. Would you like me to read them?
That's one through fourteen?
One through nineteen, sir. On the front page.
This is S. 13, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Density and Dimensional Regulations? Okay, I just, I don't see the relationship to it, but it's just probably my oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article S. 13? Yes, gentleman at the microphone.
Bob Blair, Precinct Five. I move to amend the article that any changes to the zoning bylaw do not interfere or restrict with existing bylaws that overlap the Wareham Narrows Historic District.
Is there a second on your motion to amend?
I'll second that.
Do you have that in, I shouldn't have let you go back all the way. Do you have that in writing?
Ken, did you want to just give everybody a heads up, maybe? I don't know if it was you or the planning board that was supposed to speak to this, but I think giving people an idea would be great.
So, I'm going to recognize Ken Buckland, our town planner, on this Article S. 13.
Yes, Director of Planning and Community Development, Ken Buckland. This S. 13 is a work to correct errors in the drafting of Article Six of the zoning bylaws. It is simple corrections, for the most part, of information that is not clear in the bylaw. And this just helps clarify the intent, the original intent of the bylaw, the way it was written. It doesn't change anything other than the errors that have been accumulated in the bylaw over time.
So, for example, Number 13, it's changing fifteen feet, changed distance to distant?
That's correct. And taking out NR, which means no regulation, and just putting in a dash instead where there is no regulation intended to, in that particular dimensional standard.
So, there's no changes that would allow somebody to do something they couldn't do before, vice versa?
Thank you for directing my thoughts here. You're absolutely right.
Okay, sir. Thanks, folks. I appreciate it. Sorry.
We're just reviewing the amendment. I'm not sure what its effect might be, or even if it's really within the scope of this particular article.
If I may, is a point of clarification?
Hang on one second. No, 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 no. Hang on one second. not interfere or restrict existing bylaws of the Wareham Narrows Historic District, I'm going to rule that this particular motion to amend is not an order, not within the scope of Article S. 13, which appears to be just to correct some typographical or perhaps organizational issues in the zoning bylaws. So, I think that the next speaker...
Jim Echabachi, again, I still don't know what district I belong to. As I look at this, as I look at this, and as I'm sure Mr. Manese did, and possibly others, when we get to Article 13, we'd like to read the explanation. The explanation talks in relative detail, referencing Article S. 15.
Right.
So, I think that's a point of confusion.
No, 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 no. Let him finish.
And I think if we just kind of vote on 13 as a correct mistakes article, get past 14 and get to 15, and read the explanation from 13, it'll all make a lot more sense.
Thank you. I think that's a good point.
It appears that...
I haven't recognized you, actually.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, go.
It does appear that the explanation, excuse me, for that article was not printed, so we apologize. It appears that it was, that the one for the subsequent, which we'll talk about later on in the evening, was duplicated. So, it appears that the explanation of non-substantive changes, which should have been inserted, was not. So, we apologize.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article S. 13? I'm just seeing if Mr. Buckland is sitting down. Yes, lady at the microphone.
I would like to propose an amendment. There was a scrivener's error. My name is Jane Gleason, Precinct One. I am a member of the planning board. And the scrivener's error was in Table 620... I'm sorry.
Now, wait, let her finish speaking. No, let her finish speaking and give her explanation, and then I will...
I'm sorry. I'm stumbling here.
Rule on whether the motion to amend is in order.
I was not prepared to get up and speak about this. My apologies. Help, help, help. In the table 628, the words "building coverage" should be changed to the words "floor area ratio." That was a scrivener's error and got changed in the new text to read "building coverage." And it was intended to just be a copy from the existing, and it should read "floor area ratio."
The section that you're referring to, 628...
Correct.
Are you referring to it as it reads in the handout that just was handed out this evening?
Yes.
For the town meeting?
Yes.
All right. So, you are saying that you want to amend in Section 628, the table Existing Small Lots?
Correct.
You're advising us that there's a typographical error in there...
Correct.
...which you want to amend?
Correct.
The motion to say, run that by me again.
That in the handout, it says "floor area ratio," and it's, excuse me, in the handout, it says "building coverage," and it should say "floor area ratio" to copy it directly.
No, it says "floor area." That's what was confusing me.
The handout that was presented tonight...
It's already been corrected.
...says "floor area ratio."
It's already been corrected. I stand corrected. I withdraw the motion.
Yes, it has. Thank you. Is there anything, is there anything further to be said on Article S. 13? Seeing no one standing, I'm going to call for a vote. Because this is a zoning bylaw amendment, it calls for two-thirds vote. I will try for a voice vote on this and see where that gets us. All in favor of Article S. 13, Article Six, Density and Dimensional Regulations, I move to approve this article as written in the planning board handout. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
So, I declare it's a two-thirds vote by voice. The next article is Article S. 15. Is there a motion on Article S. 15?
I move to amend the Wareham zoning bylaw to add a new Article 4A, Section 10, and other related sections as printed in the warrant.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded on Article S. 15. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on Article S. 15? And before we get to that, again, because this is a zoning bylaw amendment, I'd ask for the report of the planning board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Michael King, Precinct Three, on behalf of the planning board. Article S. 15, Redevelopment District, Zoning Bylaw Amendment. The planning board held a public hearing on this article on February 27, 2023, which was continued to March 13, 2023. The board finds the work done by the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, which resulted in the zoning bylaw amendment, being considered under Special Town Meeting, Article S. 15, to be complete and effective in promoting improvement to the Wareham Village. The board voted six-zero-zero to recommend the additional amendments to the bylaw as presented.
May I have the report and the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Again, this was the paragraph that we, that was in the prior article, but this is the paragraph that relates to this set of articles within the warrant. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as an important first step in the transformation of the Wareham Village Subdistrict into a village center, which will offer Wareham residents a vibrant place to live, work, dine, visit, and explore. These proposed changes to the zoning bylaw, along with the forthcoming rules and regulations, will help attract the kind of responsible and community-sensitive development to support the rebirth of our village center. Thank you.
May I have the report and the recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board recommends favorable action five-zero-zero.
And?
The Select Board recommends favorable action five-zero-zero.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Butler?
Yes, Madam Moderator, thank you. Dan Butler, Precinct One. I'm also the volunteer citizen-at-large and chairman of the Wareham Redevelopment Authority, and I'm excited to present this article to the town, hopefully for the town's approval. I'd like to start out by pointing out that this article here is, has been long in the making. It's very extensive. It's ten pages. It required a lot of work, and I want to thank, at this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Ken Buckland, the Director of Planning and Community Development for our town, for all the work he's done to get us to this point after several years of study and planning. I'd also like to thank the members of the planning board that likewise put in a great deal of very painstaking work to create this ten-page revision to our bylaws, which I believe is going to help with the rebirth of Wareham Village. Next slide, please. Next slide, Matt. To orient voters today, this is a bird's eye view of Wareham Village, and this is a bird's eye view of the smaller sub-district that we would like to create. Most people are probably familiar with this area, the Narrows Bridge up in the upper-left area, the old train depot down to the left here. That's Merchant's Way between the old train depot and the buildings that are along Main Street, which goes right down the middle. Next slide, please. This is a satellite view of the same area with appropriate major landmarks that should help orient folks to the area that we're talking about. I think everybody knows where Toby Hospital, the high school, town hall, the CVS are located. And as you'll see, this is a very small area, when you really think about it, compared to WV1 and WV2, the larger districts that currently exist. Next slide, please. And there's a little bit of a blow-up that gives you in more detail the actual property lots that will be affected if we create this redevelopment district, revitalization district. Next slide. I pointed out that a lot of work has gone into this. This is something that we have studied and planned for, for years. This is just fifteen years' worth, just six examples that I've picked out of sixteen years' worth of studies and plans that have gotten us to this point. And these studies and plans actually go back further than that. So, this is not something that was cooked up in a matter of weeks or months or even in the past year. This is something that an awful lot of thought and work has gone into. Next slide. I'd like to briefly outline what's in the zoning amendment. Next slide. Those ten pages that you have includes a brief description of the sub-district, what our purpose is for creating the sub-district. These are the highlights. It will create new density, dimensional, and height... It will create new density, dimensional and height limits within that sub-district. And this will allow these things to happen. These are things that are not happening now and we're not attracting private investment to Wareham Village because we haven't allowed enough density. We haven't allowed the creation of residential units that would make it profitable for a developer. The parking requirements are onerous and they have prevented investment in our village. We have to begin planning to construct above the floodplain. That's not something that, that, if, whether you believe in climate change or not, FEMA believes in it, the state believes in it, the federal government believes in it. Any new construction in this area is going to have to be built above the floodplain. It adds design guidelines, which were, which the planning board helped us develop. It allows new uses, things that will make this a vibrant foodie destination, a place that people will want to bring their commerce. It, it doesn't do some things. It will not allow marijuana establishments in this new sub-district. And this also requires that the planning board scrutinize any plans that any property owner might bring forward to take advantage of these new zoning updates that we're proposing. Next slide. I'll address the elephant in the room because this is the one thing that when we, in four public meetings, asked people their opinion, they wondered about, I had that one with a straw poll.
So 30-second warning, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Fifty percent of the people responding to the straw poll in town thought it would be great and fine to allow the buildings to go higher if it would encourage investment in our village. The other 50% didn't think it was a good idea. We have to do this. We have to be able to build above the floodplain to attract investors and we have to get, make this financially feasible for investors. Next slide. These are all the things that will be permitted. I won't read them to you in the interest of time. Next slide.
So allow you to finish up, but your time is actually up, so if you could just sum up.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll sum up. To sum up, the planning board, as with all zoning articles, is the gatekeeper. They will allow excellent projects to go forward that we would like to see here in our town and they'll squash the bad ones. Next slide. That's 63 feet high on that building, which is in the proposed sub-district. Next slide. This is our vision for Main Street. If we can put these revisions in place, this is what we would expect to be brought forward to the planning board as proposals for property owners who would like to revitalize our downtown. Next slide. This is what Merchant's Way should look like and this is what it could look like if we pass this article. Next slide. So I urge my fellow residents and citizens to vote yes on this Article S-15. And Madam Moderator, if I may, I, I think it would be helpful to voters in the town if they hear from an investor in the town, a developer or property owner, who has strong opinions about our zoning in the village. And I think he's well-known. He's, he grew up here. He's not a resident. And so I ask for your indulgence and permission of town meeting to allow Danny Warren to briefly address the assembly. Thank you.
So let me put that to the body, asking for permission for Danny Warren, a non-voter, to speak on this particular article. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please say no. I, I declare it passed. No, no.
Two, two, two.
You have two minutes, Mr. Warren.
Good evening. Well, first of all, thanks for having me. And second of all, I want to thank every, all the boards, everybody that's helped me through this. It's been, it's been quite an experience and they've all been wonderful. And especially my neighbors and the community that put up with all the noise and all the fuss. Now to get to the point. I, I have a vision of the town of being a beautiful place. And I, I love the town. I could have gone to a lot of towns, but I chose this town. I have two projects now. I'm contemplating another one. There needs to be change, but I think it needs to be done the way it's being done, well-thought-out and a lot of people's input. I don't have anything that I would say that could be negative about my experience in, in my project. The things that we need to work on, and I think we need to try to work on it as a community, because a lot of things are out, are out of our hands. The state gets involved. We might need to go to them. But we got to find that balance of keeping the town that we love and making it possible for an investor to invest large amounts of money into what I'm doing. Like in my, in my situation, there's no banks. I'm the bank, because no bank would have ever funded that.
You have 30 seconds.
So in closing, thank you. I love the town. If I can help in any way, I want to.
Thank you. Gentlemen at the microphone.
Yes, Rick England, over Jordan Road, Wareham, Precinct 3. I'm also a business owner in the center of town of Wareham, Legacy Insurance Agency. This is not what it seems or where it appears to be. Yes, it was a very pretty, nice show that was put on, put on. What we're really looking for here with this development is, in this height change, is for more apartments. Thus more taxes, more students. This, the school right here, right now, is already tapped for the size and the amount of students that is in there and that's without Red Brook Road coming in. So now we're looking at adding more apartments and we want people to subsidize that with their taxes and maybe build a whole new school because we don't have enough room for the amount of apartments that this is looking to go for. There won't be any 40B because it's zoned that way, but Section 8 is certainly going to be eligible to come into these apartments. Main Street is and has been, for quite some time, a business district. There's 60 merchants, businesses, restaurants here on Main Street that, that is no longer the mecca of the retail that it used to be. I'd say it's more of when the Mammoth Mart came into town that things started changing. On, on Main Street, you have six or seven law firms, three insurance agencies, six beauticians. You have architects, engineers, seven small, small restaurants.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
Chiropractors. All right, the gentleman there had a lot more time than I did. So I don't know if you've got 30 seconds. Insurance agencies, beauticians, and so on. What we're consisting of is more businesses. These town fathers don't give a rat's behind what's going to happen to me. Because if something, if these things go through, I'm out of business and so are the about 30 other businesses. And they're going to be torn down and we're going to be out of business. And I will request more time. There, of course, it wants to be...
You're at time now. How much more time would you like, Mr. England?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Did, did you say you wanted more time? How much more time would you like?
Yes, I would like more time.
How much more time would you like?
Um, I gotta go down to the end of the page. There'll be probably, maybe one minute.
That, that's fine. You have a minute.
Okay. And they're also looking to, this proposal, or what we've seen in the newspapers, is that we're going to be tearing down, like the Looks Unlimited Salon, M&amp;D Bait. And if you've seen those buildings, they've all been redone and they're very beautiful. You're going to, what, create a new park? And then, so what, we can tear down those buildings and have a new park so we can see a gas station? Or Cumberland Farms. I don't see that Cumberland Farms is anything where, and this is all. What we are about is, is a neighboring towns. You won't see this 65-foot limit in, in Mata Poisette, Marion, Rochester, Boon, Plymouth. You're going to, into, down to, even down to Hyannis. They don't have any of these height, for, they got three and four, not even four-story buildings, three-story buildings. So, do you need this development? Do you need to develop in order to get this grant that was coming up? What we need to increase in the zoning height for Main Street, you don't need that to get a grant. You don't have to go to the 65 feet for that. You want to bring in a developer, you, you had developers come in and give you ideas. What do you want, think a developer wants to do? The developer wants to build as much as he can for as much, for, for as many people as possible. So what I'm saying here is that Wareham is a village. It has been a village. It's not 1957, I understand that, but there are businesses there and it's not going to end up being the retail mecca that you seem to think it's going to be anymore. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, no clapping. No, 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 no. You can make your opinion known when you vote. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Jessica Braley. I'm a non-voter. I own a business at, right next to Rick on 213 Main Street.
Did you say you're a non-voter?
I'm a non-voter, yes.
Okay, so could you state your name and then you have to get permission actually from the body in order to speak?
My name is Jessica Braley. I own a business at 213A Main Street.
Okay. All those in favor of allowing Ms. Braley to speak to the body, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You have two minutes.
Uh, to reiterate some of the things that Mr. England said, I've spent the last six months of my life investing just about every penny I have into a business in this redevelopment area. I am the business you guys want to put there. When looking and trying to bring in new businesses, completely abandoning the 60-yard businesses that are there will have an effect on new businesses. I've spent six months of my life trying to give you exactly the art gallery and, and crystal shop and everything else that I could possibly, the best one I could give you. And this redevelopment to put apartments and raise the height of a quaint village to almost 70 feet, I think it's going to ruin what brought me to Wareham Village to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. Again, you can make your opinion known when we call for a vote. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Kim Schaub. I live in Pinehurst. And I have owned a property in this town for almost 30 years. And I am on the committee, the, the citizen committee that's been working on this reinvestment process. And I'm hoping that there are more people from that because it's a robust group of people that have been working really hard on this for months. Bottom line is, you know, I had to, there was a mention of the schools about being too full. Well, we lived here from 2008 until our kids were ready for junior high and high school. And we had, we chose to leave and go somewhere else for high school and moved out of town for 10 years because there hadn't been enough, you know, there's not enough students in there, et cetera, and we came back when our kids went to college. But right now, in the high school, there's so much school choice that the high school is graduating numbers that are well below their capacity. So I, I'm not worried about, you know, schools being overrun. As far as downtown, you know, we walk to downtown from Pinehurst and we do enjoy the, the businesses that are there. We support the local businesses. I do not think that this bylaw change is going to try and kick out all of the businesses. In fact, Ricky's, you know, he's, I'm one of his customers. I think that what we're seeing right now is the undeniable process of, you know, global warming, believe it or not, but whatever, the tides are rising. We've got documents for that. We're going to have to do something. I mean, we are, we are flooding. We're going to flood downtown. We need to raise the buildings eventually and there's so much funding right now from the government to do so, that we have to grasp while it's here and actually invite the businesses to stay. I, we, we frequent all the new businesses. We love them, but there are so many empty storefronts in our downtown village. This village should look like, you know, a flourishing Cape Village and it's not. I mean, there are amazing businesses there, but there can be more businesses there, not different businesses there. And I, I think that, you know, we haven't had a lot of time to do this, but if people have spent time on those committees and they're here, they should stand up and talk about it. We, we need to be able to attract families to move into town and they want a vibrant center to be able to walk to and support. We don't have that right now. I don't think this is going to be, you know, apartments that are going to be filled with people who are going to be a detriment. I think some of the planning has some apartments as part of it, but a lot of them are businesses. And I, I fully support this amendment. I think that we need to make change or we're, this is going to continue to just get worse and worse and worse.
Yes, gentlemen at the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Pete Titlebaum, Precinct 3. One of the things I think people don't understand is what you say when you mean floodplain. Floodplain means, in Wareham Village, is 14.1 feet above mean high tide. That puts it squarely near the top of the first floor of many of those buildings. I know a lot of people don't buy climate change. They don't buy the Woods Hole Report, things like that. They think it's speculative and to some extent, I agree. But I also grew up in this town. I heard tales of 1938. I heard tales of 1954 and my grandfather rowing my grandmother down Main Street to watch them put the fire out of Cornwells. Water happens there and because water happens there, federal and state regulations don't let you invest more than 50% of the current value of a building in the floodplain. So this plan was tailor-made to, if anybody goes down there to do anything and you're probably talking two lots at most where it could be done, where they have the size, where so many could invest, is put parking underneath, mixed use above that. And by mixed use, I'm not talking stores necessarily. That can be offices. Nobody is trying to get the offices off of Main Street. It's a great place to go do business. I'm a customer of Legacy Insurance. I've gotten my hair cut down there before, you know, Minerva's Pizza, all of that. So those things would all be kept. The planning board, in issuing a special permit, can require the developer to work with the existing businesses. They can require them to talk about the rents and stabilize the rents and not run people out. But the bottom line is, it's junky down there. Let's not deny it. It hasn't gotten better. It's not going to get better. People are not investing and it's time to do something with it. It's time to make something that we're proud of. Also, as regards apartments, I haven't heard of one developer say apartments or condominiums. What's wrong with, I, I said apartments or condos.
No, 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 no. We're not going to have this exchange.
Okay.
Mr. Titlebaum has the floor.
Thank you.
He can speak.
Yes, somebody could come by with a, somebody could buy with a condo proposal. I can tell you, no, no, nobody in their right mind is going to try to put a 40B down there because the state's not going to give the tax credits that they need to survive. And when I say tax credits, they get about half of the value of their projects in tax credits from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. It's a huge amount of money. The state is not going to pay to build infrastructure that doesn't house people. So if you've got to build a parking garage to get out of the floodplain and you go to the state with an affordable housing project, they're just going to turn it down. They're not going to finance it. It's not going to happen. You're going to see market-rate apartments down there. We've seen market-rate apartments go for 3,200 for two-bedroom apartments out at Rosebrook. We've seen Tim Faye sell condos for 150 grand more than he thought he was going to get when he started doing it. Let's start devaluing the land in town and improve it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen at the microphone.
Jared Fredericksen, Precinct 5. I think we're going to talk about redevelopment, then I think people should head down to Main Street and take a walk on Merchant's Way. This is riverfront property. This is a beautiful area. We're using it for dumpsters and parking at the moment. And listen, I understand some of the previous speakers here. We have great businesses on Main Street. I frequent a lot of them myself. And I think we need to be able to work with those local businesses. But we need to remember that between each of these businesses right now is an empty storefront and a parking lot that nobody uses. That's what Main Street looks like right now. I've lived here my entire life. I love this town. I've always loved this town. I think we can do a little better than empty storefronts and unused parking lots. So again, I think it's important that we work with the businesses that exist on Main Street, allow them to be a part of decision-making when it comes to new development, things like that. But we can't afford to live in the past, especially in a time when, I mean, let's look where Main Street is right now. Let's look at where Merchant's Way is right now. Look at the opportunity that poses for the future of Wareham. I think it would be an enormous mistake, not only economically, but just for the art community, not to try and take advantage of that. And second of all, I think another speaker earlier talked about new residences on mixed-use property. I think that's a good thing. Maybe I'm alone on this. But more residences means more tax revenue for the people of Wareham. That's a good thing. We have huge funding shortages for our schools, for our library, for things like that. New residences is good for tax revenue, just one of many benefits that this is going to pose with people of Wareham. That's all I got.
Yes, ma'am, you can, I think that, I think that bends down.
When I grow up, I'll only be 5'3".
Well, we'll need, I think, I think you'll, you'll need to speak up a bit.
My name is Denise Walk. I don't know what precinct I'm in, but I live in the Pinehurst neighborhood now. I've lived in town for about five years now and been involved in some things. And, you know, this is a great, quaint, wonderful town, but I think that there's a lot of fear about change and I think that we need to listen and care about each other a little more than sometimes we do. I know that there is significant concern and valid concern about the possibility of businesses being displaced, of some of the character of our town changing. But we're going to have to change and it's, you know, living, walking distance from that part of town now, I, I see it for what it is and I see it for what it could be. And I think that... And I think that allowing ourselves to change the bylaw in order to create opportunity is not a bad thing. It doesn't mean we're going to have 65-foot buildings. It means that we might be able to have them. It gives the Planning Board the opportunity to take into consideration good projects. And it doesn't mean that it's all going to be built up like that. So I just think that we need to allow ourselves the flexibility as a town to improve our spaces, to draw in more businesses, more opportunities for residences, and more opportunities for work in our town. Thank you.
Yes, lady at the microphone.
Hi, I'm Lucille Dodson, precinct two. And the reason why I'm here speaking right now is because my family and I have been involved in this town since, well, over 40 years. And when I think back at the early days of coming into this town, I think of Cranberry Highway and how charming it used to be with small, little quaint shops along the way. And now it's, it's an absolute disaster, especially in East Wareham. And when I think of that, I don't want to see Main Street changed. I, I moved here because of the quaintness of this village area. And I don't necessarily think change is a good thing. I think that we need to invest in what we have there. And yes, it's a beautiful waterfront area, but there are money that can be invested in without going to 65-foot buildings. And remember, people in this town, once you vote it, it will never go back. If you pass this, it will never go back. So be careful of what you vote for. And I don't trust it. I don't particularly think that that's what, in this small, little area, that that is what's needed, 65-foot buildings. And again, think about this village staying quaint and investing what is what's already there and fixing up what's already there, but not necessarily because it has to go to 65 feet. Thank you.
Please hold your clapping, applauding, whatever. Yes, sir?
Sam Corby, precinct four. Downtown is filled with great businesses, but there's a lot of businesses that aren't even open, vacant buildings, two banks have closed, and a waterfront that's underreutilized. We have a waterfront that nobody can see. All we do is park cars back there. This can help that. That's one of the things that's key to Wareham. We have the second largest coast in the state and we don't use enough of it. This is a plan. It's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to be completed in five years. It's a long-term plan. But it's a plan, it's a place to start. There's no other plan out there. I've been here 43 years, I think. I haven't seen another plan for downtown. All I've seen is businesses leave, buildings are in disrepair, and this could help. And don't forget the waterfront. We have a great waterfront that's unused. Thank you. Please support this article.
Yes, sir?
Urban Russell, precinct six. And I would like to offer an amendment for further study and what would be the urgency or the, the consequences of, of that motion at present?
So you're, you have a motion to amend for further study. First, let me ask, is there a second on your motion? I hear motion and a second to amend for further study of Article S-15. So I think that is in order. And what we are going to do, we have some subsequent speakers behind you, but the first thing, let me just caution the speakers behind you, that we will be speaking to your proposed amendment. Then we'll take a vote on that, yes or no, and then we'll proceed from there. So did you have something that you wanted to speak to on your amendment?
Yes, I'm questioning the urgency of this action with so many questionable actions, unintended actions that could take place. I mean, just the time factor involved with the construction of, of raising this, this elevation water table seems like it would just be very detrimental to so many people. And I don't know if that full, that's been given full consideration. And maybe a further study would give these people a chance to get back together and realize some compromise in, in the action. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, gentlemen, to speak to the amendment only at this point?
Good evening. Cliff Sylvia, precinct one. I came to Wareham in 1966. And this thing has been studied at nauseam. We have had so many studies on Wareham that it seems to me that every town meeting I came to, there was a study for the revitalization of the village. So certainly I'm against any amendment for further study because it's been studied to death. The second thing that I want to say is, over the years that I've been here in town, and I love this town, if anybody knows me, they know that I love this town, that we've seen change. Unfortunately, the change has not been positive. You know, other than maybe the mall or some other things, but for the most part, you know, the village has kind of dried up. The ba, the Merchant's Way looks like a ghetto. We've got broken-down buildings. We've got holes on the side of the buildings. We've got garbage pickup, garbage cans everywhere. The second thing is that to further study this would be just to procrastinate. And what, what I really feel though is that unfortunately, if this goes through and we get this beautiful development down on Main Street, the sense of pride of our boards, our select people, our finance committees, those people in charge, I mean, my goodness, we just took the snowflake season's greetings off the, the poles last week. That's a lack of pride. That's a lack of caring. We've got sign ordinances that are not enforced. We've got all kinds of signs all over town. We, I was here when we voted a sign ordinance that isn't enforced. So regardless of whether we study this to death, I am against the amendment, but I think that we should support this amendment, I mean, this motion so that we can, you know, take a little bit of pride in what we've got. And I'm sure that those issues of present merchants on Main Street will get worked out. Thank you.
So lady behind you at the microphone, you have the floor?
Hi. Crystal England, precinct three. I talked to some of the merchants. I, I spent a lot of time with Leanne at Soleil, who's just finished redoing her whole building. And this proposal proposes that her building will be ripped down, the TD Bank would stay, but the rest of Wareham, all the way to the Narrows on that side of the road, would be taken down. I wondered where the historical society stands on this. I thought Wareham was a historical little village. Isn't there any way to reinvest in Wareham without tearing down the whole town? Where, Merchant's Way, I understand, is owned by the train company, the whole road. So we're going to make that our Main Street? I mean, it's a beautiful view, yes it is, but there has to be a better way to, to honor Wareham rather than just ripping it down.
Yes, sir, to speak to the, to speak to the amendment for further study?
So I'm James England. You've heard from my mother and my father. I've grown up here. I'm a teacher. I am all for fixing downtown, but doing it through eminent domain and forcing businesses out? I've worked as a construction manager. There's no way in hell that this is going to be done within three, four years. So what are you going to do for all the businesses that are there, existing for three to four years? Where are they going to go? Even if they decide to come back, where are they going to go in terms of the three or four years it takes for the buildings to get built? If you want to do it in, in small phases, that makes sense. But this proposal as written does not do that. So I, I don't think, I don't think we can do this. If we, if we force all these businesses out of here, yeah, great, we'll get tax income in three or four years. But what are we going to do for the, the three or four years that we lose all that tax income? We lose all those businesses, lose all those people that are on Main Street? What are we going to do for that? And Merchant's Way, yes, it's owned by the railroad. We have no control over that. We own the air rights above it, but we don't, we can't control Merchant's Way. Keep Main Street as Main Street, but let's fix it, but not with this proposal. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Nadie Mellon, precinct one. Before anyone votes on this amendment, I just want to point some things out about the idea of repairing the buildings that we currently have there. The way the laws are written, and these are not town laws, these are state and federal laws, you cannot spend more than 50% of the value of the building to repair or renovate that building unless you bring that building into full code compliance, which in this case we'd be elevating the building out of the floodplain. That is essentially a financial non-starter for most of the existing buildings on Main Street. And the new zoning as proposed is just zoning. It doesn't mean anything's getting knocked down. It might mean that nothing gets done. But it's not quaint the way it is, and this is one of the potential ways we could fix it. And I just need people to understand that repair is not really an option in this case. Thank you.
Yes, you have the floor?
Jane Gleason, precinct one. I just would like to point out that this is a zoning bylaw change. The town is not looking to be the developer. There is no eminent domain involved in this. It is a zoning change. It is to open up the zoning bylaws so that developers have the option of buying property from the current owner if the current owner wishes to sell. And then doing some work there that is according to these bylaws. It is not about eminent domain. The town is not looking to take over the properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Title bomb, you've already spoken for two minutes.
Not to the amendment.
I understand that.
Speaking to the amendment.
Keep it, keep it.
I'll keep it very brief.
Very brief.
I'll keep it extremely brief. First off, Merchant's Way is not owned by the railroad. It was given over by the railroad to the town in 1959. Go look at the assessor's maps. The town owns it within about 10 feet of the tracks or basically where, you know, if you back your car up and you hit the fence, that's the border. So the town actually owns that land, the railroad does not. Secondly, I urge you to defeat the amendment. This has been studied to death. And I know because I sat through all those goddamn meetings and everything else with all these people. So it's, you know, it's been endless. This has been five years of studies just since the Redevelopment Authority was formed and got involved. I don't know what people did before I got involved in town government. I'm sure there are other committees. And in the meantime, all that's been happening is stuff keeps getting worse and worse. Buildings get condemned, tenants leave, vacancies happen, drugs happen, drinking happens. Let's clean it up. Vote the amendment down.
Yes, gentleman at the microphone?
Yeah, Andy Costello, Six Soya Street. I own a home that would be impacted directly by this.
You may have to speak a little bit closer to the microphone.
I own, I own a home on Soya Street, Six Soya Street. I've lived there for 50 years. I've raised a family there. I love the small-town quality of Wareham. It's why we moved here. I lived in Swift's Beach prior to that, growing up in summers. My father built a place down there in 1938. I was here during the '54 hurricane. So our history and roots go fairly deep in this town. And it's been a wonderful place to live because it's been a small town. I'm not against progress. I concede that we could do a lot more with the properties that we have downtown. I know it's difficult with what we're facing in terms of climate change and rising tides, but I'm not sure that 65-foot buildings, a wall of buildings, is really a solution, quite frankly. And I think further study would be warranted. One thing that hasn't been discussed is the impact of traffic, impact of losing our present environment, changing to an urban landscape from a small-town landscape. And people talked about sewer costs earlier. What this would do, the impact this would have on our sewer treatment plant, I don't think has been considered. So I think there are going to be consequences. Yes, we've been told that we would all like new restaurants, we'd like craft fairs, we would like boardwalks. Believe me, I would like that. At the same time, I do not want to stand in my backyard and see a 65-foot building surround me on two sides. Because this plan does include residential property as well as business property. And the Redevelopment Authority would have eminent domain powers in order to proceed with some of these plans. That's maybe a separate, separate debate, but I've gone to a number of meetings and it's been pretty clear that the intention isn't to use it in all cases, but it exists and it will exist under this plan. Thank you.
Mr. Corbett, you've spoken before on this article, so strictly.
To the amendment only.
Limit your, to the amendment, your comments.
One question. Who's going to further study? Our, our town planner is paid. He does a great job. Everybody else that's worked on this is a volunteer. They've worked on it for five, six, seven years. They've done their job. They've given you their best shot and what they think is going to work. Do you want these same people to re-study what they've worked on for five years and brought here tonight? They've done their job. You either like it or you don't like it, but further study doesn't do anything. It's not going to come back next year. These same people are going to come back with the same thing. That's why I would vote against further study. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Annie Hayes, Farmer's Lane, precinct five. I want to affirm the gentleman's statement when he said more study. I know more study is like banging your head against the wall, but my concern is the rapidity which with the climate is changing and projections of sea level rise. I spoke to Mr. Famely from the Woods Hole Group. He said he's taken a conservative view, meaning looking at what might be the most rapid. But then last week, it was that the Antarctic is melting at the rate of the Arctic at an enormously scary rate. So we don't know. And one of the practical concerns that I have is that we have a lot of debt in this country. We have a lot of projects that are absolutely essential. And money is limited. It's triage in my book. So we can build up and then how long before the parking spaces that are now at the level of Marcus Way are inundated, you know, the, the sunny day flooding? I wouldn't buy an apartment above or maybe even a business if my car that's parked below could have its engine flooded. So I think these are important questions. I don't think we address science enough, but I would like to say that I spoke to this at a Planning Board meeting and I said to Ken, we, I live in a house that's 150 years old. My friend just bought a 200-year-old house. They last. But with the climate changing with this rapidity, what, how many years? And I had heard that for planning for 40 years. And I'm thinking, that's shocking to plan for 40 years for buildings. So I spoke to Ken and he addressed the idea that this is really a rolling development. Most cultures move upland and that's how they survive and perpetuate. So he spoke of a rolling plan and perhaps he would again, of the process of moving upland as we are preserving what is at sea level. Thank you.
Mr. Camerano?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Dominic Camerano, onset. You know, I, I hear things on the amendment and like everyone else has said, this has been studied to death. But one thing people don't realize, 50 feet is not that high. I mean, and I have a building in this district that was built in 1802 that's 48 feet high. So for us in the year 2023 to want to go to 50 feet is not, I can't see, you know, much of a difference. And as far as downtown goes, downtown is a beautiful place and it could be a lot nicer. I mean, like I said, I own some property there. And I was sick and tired of seeing the, the old Sandander Bank run down in the bushes and nobody can see it. So what did I do? I bought it so I could fix it. So I think that the town of Wareham needs to fix the center of town and I hope that you vote to pass this. Thank you.
Yes, gentleman at the microphone? To speak to the amendment?
To speak to the amendment. Thank you. I, I don't see a big issue.
I, I don't see a big issue with studying it to a time certain and to address, there's only like three or four issues really which are outstanding that could be discussed and maybe resolved. Everybody wants to see an invigorated downtown. It's just how do we get there? And I think if we move forward to study it a little bit longer, and maybe a fall town meeting, trying to resolve the issues related to, to density, height, is this going to satisfy the MBTA communities' requirements and things like that? We should try to address those, and come back with something that everybody agrees with, or the majority. And, and one question. Would this be, will the original warrant article be a two-thirds or a simple majority?
So the, let me just drill down a little bit. So on the motion for further study, that would be a majority vote. If that goes through, it becomes the main motion. So now you have a motion for further study would be a majority vote. The, with respect to the underlying substantive Article S-15, there was some legislation that called for certain types of uses in either a transit-oriented area, and Mr. Buckland can probably speak better to this than I can, or in a commercial center, if you will, that will, that allows a majority vote to pass a zoning bylaw in this situation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I move the question.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion to move the question? There's been a motion made and seconded to move the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
No.
The most, the motion to move the question passes by a voice vote majority. So now we're going to move to Mr. Russell's motion for further study. All those in favor of the motion to further study Article S-15, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The, the motion fails by a, the motion fails on a voice, voice vote. Yes, Mr. Russell. Are there at least seven voters that rise to ask for a hand count? Yes, tellers, so I see at least seven. So tellers, be prepared to make the count. All have your voting cards ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion for further study, please signify by raising your voting card. Raise your hand high. So in Section 120, Section 2, which is the section to my left behind.
Zero.
Section 3, which is the right front.
Eighteen.
Section 4, which is the right rear.
Five.
All those opposed to the motion for further study, please signify by raising your cards. Section, Section 1.
Forty-one.
Section 2.
Forty-one.
Say again?
Forty-one.
Four-one. Section 3.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Section 4.
Thirty-six.
Five, six.
So those in favor of the motion for further study are 43. Those opposed to the motion for further study are 183. So the motion for further study fails. So, right, right. So we're returning to the main motion, which is to amend the Wareham zoning bylaws, add a new Article 4, Section 10, and other related sections as printed in the warrant. And... So is there anyone that wishes to speak to the main motion? And I will caution you at this point, we've had a significant amount of debate and issues raised at this point on the main motion before we got to the motion to amend. So I would caution you, we would like to hear only new points that you might want to raise. And again, the speakers are limited to two minutes. Mr. Slaven.
Thank you. As most of you know, the South Coast Rail, which is coming to New Bedford and Fall River in the fall, there is also what they call a spur, which will come out of the new Middleborough Station, and is planned to come to Wareham and Buzzes Bay. I cannot guarantee you 100% that this will happen, but we've been working on this for five years, and there's a very strong chance this will happen this fall. If that happens, the state has what they call TOD, Transit Oriented Development Programs, which provides a substantial amount of money where you have a train station where they will take existing buildings, and you have what they call mixed use, which again is retail and housing. I don't know about anybody else, but if you had a chance of having a nice, simple apartment, looking over in the water, getting out, getting on a train and going to Boston whenever you want, it's a pretty good deal. And I would suggest that maybe you really reconsider that this particular zoning article will allow this to happen easier, and this is something that won't cost the town money, but could change the whole basic setup of how downtown looks. Because downtown, whether you like it or not, if you look at the pictures from the 1890s and 1900, this was a beautiful place. Today, it's not a beautiful place. Thank you.
Yes, and again, I caution you, we've had significant debate on this. You have two minutes. And just points that have not been raised before, if you would.
Philip Berry, Precinct One. Just a quick question on this, because I know that it could be an expansive development if everything went through. Do we have the sewer capacity to handle this currently if, if these projects were to actually come to fruition? Does anybody have an answer to that question?
If there's anyone here that's able to and wants to answer that question, yes, Mr. Slaven.
The answer right now is simply no.
Thank you. Gentlemen, behind you.
Bob Blair, Precinct Five. Apologize, before I had a amendment, and this is the appropriate time to bring this up. So the proposal of Article S-15, the area overlaps the current Wareham Narrows Historic District. So I would move to amend this article that any changes to the zoning bylaws shall not interfere with or restrict the existing bylaws of the Wareham Narrows Historic District. Thank you.
It's been a motion to amend, to amend made and seconded. Can I have that? I'm sorry, I did the same thing again to you. Have that in writing? Is there anyone to speak to the amendment, which is a motion to, that any changes to the zoning bylaws shall not interfere with or restrict the existing bylaws of the Wareham Narrows Historic District? Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Angela Dunham, Precinct Three.
I am the president of the Wareham Historical Society. I chair the Wareham Historical Commission, and I'm also a recent member, a new member of the Historical District Commission. I rise to support the amendment that Mr. Blair just made. The Kendrick Museum is in that Narrows District, and we are about to embark on a restoration project due to the extreme generosity of two donors. So I rise to strongly support the amendment that we do not infringe on the existing laws that protect that district. I'm also here to say that I do not support 65-foot buildings. I would not like to see developers come in and dictate to this town what we as voters should be choosing and voicing our opinions on how we want our downtown to look, and not allow outside people to come in and tell us what they're going to do without our speaking. About the design standards, I understand there's a meeting on May 8th to speak to those standards. It's unfortunate that we don't have that here to look at, but I have spoken publicly on several occasions that I would like a...
30 seconds.
Thank you. A Cape Cod charm-type design for the village. And I also am concerned about the gas stations that are down there. I'm concerned about access to Toby Hospital. If we're going to be underwater, how we're going to get to it, where the new entrance is down on Main Street, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum, as to the amendment only.
Yeah, the amendment's unnecessary. This language does not eliminate the historic district's control over their subject area the other side of the Narrows. Anybody who is seeking to do any demolition there would still have to go there if they're in a historic structure, yet the demo delay permit, go through that entire hearing project, process. This does not alter their jurisdiction or their control over that area. It would allow a developer to go in and propose something, but they could turn it down. So the amendment is actually unnecessary.
Yes, gentleman at the microphone.
Yeah, my name is Claude Poyant. My parents moved here in 1952, and have owned property here for, since that time. I've seen the town change over many years myself. I think we're looking at this the wrong way before we, before we start building high-rises and doing all kinds of crazy things in the town, as I can see already started happening because of the board, the boards the way they are. I mean, the Cooney Properties got, got, got a whole bunch of houses going to be living over there, you know, which is crazy. The guy can be next door, no, no more than 10 feet away, and, and he can watch that guy shave or wash his teeth. And on High Street, they took Dr. Silver's office up there, and they've got two duplex condos. They got a main house, they got the dental office in the back, and then they've got two houses on the back street, which I don't have a problem with. But you look at High Street now, and it's, it's a joke, because all these beautiful big houses that were there, now they have California-type dwellings there. I think what, you know, I think what we ought to do is think a little further with these boards. And, and I think that instead of trying to go up 50 feet on Main Street, I think we ought to think about on the other side of Long Beach.
You have 30 seconds.
Well, I'm going to ask for more time.
No, you have 30 seconds.
On the, on the other side of Long Beach, which faces Brothers Bay, okay? That's where we should put a rip to prevent all this water from coming into Wareham, Swift Beach, Hamilton Beach, and all the other beaches around. That's what we should be looking at, raising money through the government to put a rip out there to break the, all that current from coming in and disturbing all the houses that are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady at the microphone.
Hi, thank you. Jamie Rebhan, Precinct One. I am rising to ask you to support this article. Is it perfect? No. But what it is, is a zoning bylaw. It doesn't start anything tomorrow if we pass this. There are no skyscrapers that are going to be built. There are no businesses that are going to be demolished. These are tools so that the people that we elected to do a job, and the people that they appointed to do their jobs, can encourage development downtown. We can come back later and change this if it turns out we, it was a bad idea. But I think enough people have vetted this, including the people we elected and the people who appointed those people. It's been studied enough. They need the tools to make changes. We can fix the language later if we need to. At the end of the day, these have been vetted by people who know what they're doing. Please vote for this, or don't, that's fine. But come on, people, it's late.
Is there anything further to be said on the amendment? I see no one standing, so we're going to take a vote on the amendment. The amendment is that any changes to the zoning bylaws shall not interfere with or restrict the existing bylaws of the Wareham Narrows Historic District. All those in favor of that amendment, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the amendment, please signify by stating nay.
Nay.
The, the motion to amend fails on a voice. We're returning now to the main motion. I move to amend the Wareham zoning bylaws, add a new Article 4A, Section 10, and other related sections as printed in the warrant. And this is something I think we've had a fair amount of debate on the pros and cons of this.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I, I request to move the motion. I request to move the question.
Is there a second on the motion to move the question? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay.
Nay.
The motion to move the question has passed. So we're now going to move to the main motion. I move to amend the Wareham zoning bylaws to add a new Section 4A, Article 4A, Section 10, and other related sections as printed in the warrant. And as I stated earlier, because of some changes to legislation with 40A, this calls for a majority vote. However, in an abundance of caution, I'm going to, at the front end of this, call for this to be a hand-counted vote by the tellers. So all those in favor of, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your cards high. Tellers? Section 1.
35.
Section 2.
36.
Section 3. Section 4.
54.
All those opposed to the motion, please signify by raising your voting cards. Section 1. Section 2.
7.
7? Section 3. Section 4. Thank you. The chair declares that this is actually passed by two-thirds vote. With 174 in favor and 66 opposed. 67. Article S-7. Is there a motion on Article S-7?
Madam Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve and fund collective bargaining agreements between the Town of Wareham and the AFL-CIO Local 30, Wareham Library Union; B, Massachusetts Laborers Public Employees Council 1249 of the Laborers International Union of North America; Wareham Foreman's Union; C, Wareham Professional Firefighters EMT Association, IAFF Local 2895; and E, Wareham Police Union, MCOP Local 423.
Second. There's been a motion made in second on Article S-7. Is there anything further to be said?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Madam Moderator, just your indulgence. Before town meeting started, the young man, Toby Alfred, who was hit, passed away earlier this evening. So I just would ask for a moment of silence.
Yes, of course. If we could have a moment of silence with regard to the young man that just recently passed. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers, of course, are with him and his family.
Thank you. I appreciate your indulgence. These are the union contracts before you. They've been read off. Just not to go through the whole amount, most of these are for three years. Some of them have most of the years already gone. So, for example, the EMT, going through that, there's 16 total positions that are impacted, and the cost of that, $53,400. The four-persons union, this has been, it's been whittled down. There used to be a lot more on the municipal maintenance side. There's only one, and I think we have, I was just going through because we've had some changes, guys. There are three, four persons left, two now. So when it was based off of the four total, it was just under a $15,000 impact. We just, we lost a member. The Wareham Library Association is a total of three persons, and that's $10,350. The police union, obviously, it's a larger unit. It's got 35 member positions, and the cost of that's approximately $131,127.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article S-7? Seeing no one rising, I'll call for a vote on Article S-7, as appears on the screen. All those in favor of the motion on Article S-7, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. Passes unanimously. Article S-12. Is there a motion on Article S-12?
Madam Moderator, Article S-12, Harvard Service Permits Reseeves Reserved for Appropriation. I move and approve Article S-12, as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second on the motion? Motion made in second on Article S-12, and again, I'm a bit remiss, is a report and recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval, 900.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-12?
Thank you. In the Finance Committee packet, it's broken down on page 57. Vessel dockage, $4,750. Supplies to build public kayak and dinghy rack storage, $4,000. And then outdoor motor replacement, additional expense. That's already been appropriated. It's taken about two years to get these motors. As you all know, things are happening, and there was an increase, so that's to cover. And these have already been approved, so the total amount is $18,750. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-12? Seeing no one standing, I'll call for a vote on Article S-12. All those in favor of the motion, as it appears on the screen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. Passes unanimously. Article S-3.
Article S-3, Spring 2023 Capital Program. I move that the town transfer $2,705,000 from Certified Free Cash Fund to fund and equip items A through L, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And further, that the town appropriate $650,000, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, for the purpose of purchasing and equipping item M. And to meet such obligation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, and Section 8.14, or pursuant to any other enabling authority.
Second. The motion was made in second on Article S-3 because one of these items on here is a borrowing article, requires a two-thirds vote. Is there anything to be said on Article S-3?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So going through the list, it's a little lengthy. So the first item is the school department. There's two special ed buses and 77 passenger bus. That's pretty self-explanatory. The next one, you'll see, we've already approved the boiler. And what this is, to cover the portion that the town would owe after the MSBA reimbursement. Right now, it's approximately, I believe, $650,000 projected, but with any incidentals, I've put in $720,000. If we don't expend it, you know, obviously, that just goes back to the general fund to be certified as free cash again. Municipal Maintenance Department, 10-wheeler plow with plow package. This would be replacing a, it's listed as a 2002, but it's actually a 2000 Volvo that's up to $375,000 now to purchase and equip. You know, I gotta tell you, one we have, it's got some issues. It is functioning, but these can take 18 months to two years to get. So we're ordering it now while we still, to get that taken care of. The municipal maintenance item D, the trailer leaf vacuum, I think you've all seen them, some of the landscapers have that. You can imagine with the amount of property we have, including cemeteries. Just to tell you, the last two that we've had was one from 1962 and then one from the 1980s that we bought used. So this is, it's going to be a very good piece of equipment for us. Municipal Maintenance Pickup with Plow Package, that's, we're looking at a 3/4-ton pickup with plow package. That would be replacing a 1998 GMC Sierra. Municipal Maintenance, this is the Wareham Free Library Exterior Rehabilitation. So 300,000, that is a lot of money. I do not believe that's going to take care of the entire outside. If you've been there, you've seen what's going on with it. The goal is start replacing, especially with the big window and the rot, and take care of that and clean it up with PVC board. And honestly, once we get into that, we're going to know a lot more of the total costs. So please understand, if I'm coming to you in a future town meeting, this 300,000, it does not, I do not believe this will be enough to take care of it, but this is the first step. Inspection Services, three vehicles, $100,000. We're looking to replace the three Chevy Colorados from 2005. We had four, one with the rot on the frame is no longer, would not pass inspection. If you've gone out there, you've seen them, you can see where they've actually welded and patched them along the sides. It's, I make the joke, it's one of the few things maybe the kids of this new generation don't understand, but when you go like this to roll down the window, they still have the roll-down cranks. So, you know, those are what we're looking at. And so we're looking at some hybrid, potentially plug-in electric vehicles, $100,000. We have another $20,000 set aside, and if we don't expend all of it, obviously, that will go back to the general fund. IT Department, three-year contract, cyber monitoring. You know, we have a IT department, obviously, but we cannot have a 24/7 department. And I think some of you have seen some of the horror stories from other towns that have been held for ransomware. This is needed for us pretty desperately. This is a three-year contract, setting it up for $150,000. I will tell you, it's, we've been utilizing it now as sort of a test run already. It's been worth its cost because on a Friday evening before a long weekend, it caught an intrusion. So you can imagine what would have happened during that time if we weren't there to catch it. So Mr. Underhill and his team have done a great job, so we appreciate their hard work. The next step is more for the technology. This is a two-phase. You've probably had, if you have your banking or anything like that, dual-factor authentication. I, for whatever reason, cannot say it properly, but it's, that's what we need to set up. You'll see in another article where we're going to get the licensing for it, but this is to actually buy the fobs. Every town employee that has a computer or desktop computer is going to be required to have one of those fobs because not every town employee has a town cell phone, so that's how we're setting it up. And then the rest of it is to replace desktops and other technology. Over the last six years, we've been buying used desktops, refurbished desktops, and some of them are no longer, when Microsoft phases out some of their operating systems, we are stuck because that's what we're operating on. So this is on, we're going to phase in several years of changing these out. Police Department tasers and a body cam pilot program for $75,000. The EMS department, these are the LifePak monitors and defibrillators. Our current ones are 10 years old. The, you know, the manufacturer says an eight-year lifespan on them. I need you to understand that these actually connect to the hospital. You're going to, can send the information. These are sophisticated, and they're lifesaving devices. The EMS department. In October 21th, town meeting, we approved ordering an ambulance. We ordered it right away off of one of the bid lists. We still do not have that ambulance to this day. But we are in a, what we do is try and have a three-year cycle to replace our ambulances so that the three ambulances never get as old as they were at one point when they were 16 to 20 years old. So what I'm seeking is to get the final two payments. Once we get it, we pay it off, most likely in fall town meeting. I'm going to seek your authorization to go for another one because we're going to have to order it because that's going to take maybe another 18 months, two years. And then the last one is, in the town administration handout, you will see a very lengthy, three-page document from the Harbor Master talking about the replacement of the patrol vessel. The one that they're replacing is, it was inadequate to begin with, or requesting replace, it was inadequate to begin with. Think about it, that's their, that's their police cruiser, that's their ambulance when they're out there, that's their work boat. The one that we have is currently on its last legs. I don't know how long it's going to take to get those built. I mean, engines took, have taken us almost two years. So it's time to move forward on that. There's a lot of great information there. But also, you know, that we're borrowing, we're paying it back through the Harbor Service Permit fees. So the fees that the boaters pay are paying for this boat. So that's it, folks. That's the lengthy tribe.
A vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article 900. Also, on the Capital Planning Committee, recommend approval 600.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board voted, recommended favorable action 500.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-3? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article... Yes, please state your name and your precinct.
Holly Van Nest, onset precinct 2, I believe. Just a question, in the special town meeting warrant, there is, the approval of the HVAC system for the library is included, but it's not up on the list there.
That's not the warrant, that's the Finance Committee handbook, right? That's right on there.
No, I'm looking at, I'm looking at page 51 of the special town meeting warrant.
It's not a warrant, that's the Finance Committee handbook. The warrants are what were posted in the precincts and things like that. So that's the document that the Finance Committee puts together.
Okay.
So the system for the library was saying we're seeking grants. So we're just explaining to them, but I didn't need approval to seek that grant.
Okay. Just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Yep, perfect.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S-3? Seeing no one else standing, I will call for a vote on Article S-3, again, because it has a borrowing, it requires a two-thirds vote, but I'll try this on a voice vote. All those in favor? All those in favor of Article S3, as appears on the screen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously. Article S14. Yes?
Madam Moderator, Article S14, change of funding source for the 2022 Fall Town Meeting Water Pollution Control Facility. Article 15, secondary clarifiers upgrades. Article S16, WPCF headworks. And Article 17, Swift Beach Smith Street sewer lines. Move to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Has been a motion made in second on Article S14. Do I have the report and the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted a recommendation by 900.
And the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board voted 500 to recommend favorable action.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S14? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article S14. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously. Article S4. Is there a motion on Article S4?
Yes, Madam Moderator, transfer of available funds, Article S4. I move that town transfer $1,150,000 from certified free cash to be used for stabilization fund in the amount of $325,000. OPEB trust fund, $300,000. Collective Bargaining Reserve, $100,000. Benefits Reserve, $100,000. Emergency Management, $100,000. Code Enforcement, $100,000. Grant Funding, $100,000. And Conservation Bylaw Rewrite, $25,000.
Is there a second? Has been a motion made in second on Article S4?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The stabilization fund, the current balance is $4,333,577. We're usually transferring $125,000. And the reason you see $325,000 is back in the Fall Town Meeting. We essentially borrowed from the stabilization fund when we didn't have free cash to fund the LED streetlight conversion, which actually started last week. So, that's, that started, so we're replenishing those funds. And you'll have a little over $4.658 million. That's about five, that's just under 6%, so 5.93% of our operating budget. The Department of Revenue says you should have at least 3% to 5% of your operating budget in stabilization fund. The, the, what do you call it? The bond rating agencies are starting to ask for 7% to 10%. I think if we keep it in the 6% range, we are, we're in very good shape. This is something everyone should be very proud of. They worked hard. About 12 years ago, I think we had $450,000 in there. So, thank for everybody that's worked on that. The OPEB trust fund with, which is other post-employment benefits, so retiree health care. We currently have $2.198 million in there. So, this would bring us to just under $2.5 million with the $300,000 transfer. And that's one of the policies is to keep that transfer going. Collective Bargaining Reserve, this would bring our reserve to approximately $150,000. We will be going into negotiations with sergeants, lieutenants, and I've got one other union. I'm sorry, I can't think off the top of my head, but, so we're setting the reserve. The emergency management, that is, we never want to have to worry about budgets when planning on emergencies or taking actions ahead of time to make sure they're safe. Code Enforcement, the $100,000. I would steer you towards Wareham Ave and Onset. That is costing us a lot of money. If you've gone by there, you've seen how much we've been taking out, towing the vehicles. And we don't want to, the court's delay is enough. We don't have to worry about payments when it's time to clean up matters like that. Grant funding, we'd set aside $100,000 already. This would increase it to $200,000. And I think we'll leave that be till we start drawing down on it. The Conservation Bylaw Rewrite, we, I think everybody's in agreement. It's time to, to take some action, the Conservation Commission and others to rewrite that bylaw and make it, make it more usable. And I think that's all for, do I have the, okay, yep.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted 900.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board voted 500 to recommend favorable action.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S4? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article S4, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously. Article S10. Is there a motion on Article S10?
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article S10 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Motion has been made in second on Article S10. May I have the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommend 630.
May I have the report and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board voted 500 to recommend favorable action, enthusiastically, I might add.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S10?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. If you look at page 16 of the town administration handout, that gives you an idea of what's being planned. Bayview Park is a great, it's a beautiful location. This is to make it, if you will, even better, handicapped accessibility. So, while it's great for some of us, there's others that cannot utilize this whatsoever. It also creates, if you look in the center, almost a dedicated event space, which for, it's utilized for weddings, it's utilized for other space. It just makes it that much better. You'll also see, when you look about it, when you look at it, it creates, might seem ironic for me, but walking loops, you know, for health, for things such as that. So, it's really, it's, it's taking something that's a very nice park and making it even better. And we think it's something good for the residents of Onset. You'll see that it creates main park entrances. We'll also have to work with stormwater infiltration. And if you go to the next page, you will see the breakdown of it. We're at the 90% design. It is not cheap. The overall plan is gonna cost about $1.5 million. We're seeking $1,080,000 in community preservation funds. This is in allowable use. Again, this was one of the, in our ADA self-assessment, this was one of the locations that was described. Right now, we have the other funding, just so you know, backing it up, $444,400 of other funding, including Community Development Block grant funding, $279,400. We've already paid approximately $80,000 on the preliminary design and engineering. And we have $85,000 listed and worked by Municipal Maintenance Department. If this is approved by the body, we will also try and seek other grants as well to maybe take some of the burden off of the Municipal Maintenance Department and the community preservation funds. Then whatever's expended, if it wasn't utilized, all the community preservation funds, they, it goes back to them. But for a lot of the grants, you need to actually get the approval from town meeting before you can go and apply for the grants.
Thank you. A gentleman at the microphone.
My name is Neil Sullivan from Onset, Mass. Congratulations, I think it's a wonderful project. I know you tirelessly going after grant money, CP money, and everything else you can possibly get. My concern is this, I mean, our, if you take a look at our budget right now, approximately 70% of the budget is going towards the schools when you include the 42% or 43% you have in there now, as well all the salaries and benefits and post-employment benefits. We have 4% in our municipal maintenance budget. Right now, we have them stretched very, very thin. I've been here before and I've asked, how are we going to maintain our properties for the benefit of all citizens? And I haven't really gotten a good answer. And I'll give you a couple of examples. We have asked for Bayview Park to be built with municipal maintenance employees. It sounds like they're gonna be doing a lot of work on the Wareham Free Library. They did the recent dog park. They did the parking lot in Onset, and I could go on and on. They worked tirelessly, they have a short staff. 4% of the overall budget is not going to cut it when we ask, not that this gets done the first time where we're getting the money, but how are we going to maintain our properties? Two years ago, I sat before the body and I said, we need to clean up and update the town bluff in the town of Onset. And we could go all the way around in Wareham and say, there are many places that need to be maintained. Two years ago, we had a citizens petition on this floor that I was involved with. And we said, yes, we're going to eliminate all of the background noise to allow municipal maintenance to perform their job. To date, nothing has been done with that property. My fear and the question that I have for the Selectment Board and others is how are we going to continuously pay and maintain our properties beyond taking on these projects as a one-time event? Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S10? Seeing no one else standing, I will call for a vote on Article S10 as printed in the warrant. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay.
Nay.
It passes by a majority. Article S8. Do I have a motion on Article S8?
Madam Moderator, I move to approve Article S8 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Motion has been made in second on Article S8. Is there anything further to be said on the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. What this seeks to do is to establish the opioid stabilization fund and then transfer the funds we've received this year into it. The funds are $158,759. Now, this is a stabilization fund. Those funds cannot be expended without a two-thirds vote from the town meeting, the body. You know, there's been some chatter that, about these funds and such, so I think this helps clarify it. Also, any other funds that come in the future can come here into this as well. Just so everybody understands, that $158,759 represents five years of a settlement. So, it's not, you know, it's welcome monies, but it's not money from heaven. So, but also, this allows us to start the conversation and have the open dialogue on how to handle expending these funds and what, you know, the citizens and those impacted feels the best use. Thank you.
May I have the vote and the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted to recommend 900.
May I have a vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board voted 500 to recommend favorable action.
Is there anything further to be said on Article S8? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article S8. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes unanimously. Article S2. Do we have a motion on Article S2?
I make a motion on S2 to fund the parking program as written in the warrant.
As printed in the warrant?
As printed in the warrant.
Thank you, is there a second on that motion? Motion made in second on Article S2. Is there anything, well, let me have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended 700.
Is there a vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board voted 500 to recommend favorable action.
Is there anything further to be stated, said on Article S2?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is simply to fund the parking program. It's using the Onset parking fees. We're estimating the parking program to run just a little over $54,000 for the year. It's gonna be, this is the first year since COVID that we're, it's really been up and running. And then there's an additional $25,000 that you can use for Onset-related projects. For example, we used funds from the parking, the parking kiosk funds to create the pickleball courts and repave the basketball courts over at Hammond, over by the Hammond School. So, just giving you an idea of what those are used for.
Thank you, is there anything further to be said on Article S2? Seeing no one standing, I'll call for a vote on Article S2. All those in favor of the motion that appears on the screen, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by stating nay. It passes by a voice majority. Article S9, and I'm gonna call on our deputy moderator to handle this.
All right, can I have a motion on Article S9, please?
Deputy Moderator, Article S9, Earth Removal Engineering Study. I move to approve Article Number 9 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Was there any recommendation from the Finance Board?
The Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article 801.
801, all right. Board of Selectmen, was there a vote from you?
Select Board recommends favorable action 500.
Does anyone wish to speak to the article? Just for clarification, this is going to be to transfer and not raise and appropriate. So, this is a transfer article. Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article S9. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. The motion carries.
Article S16. Is there a motion on Article S16?
Yes, Madam, Mr. Moderator, Article S6, oh, excuse me, Margaret. Article S16, Cohasset Road, I move that the town move my boundary line so my house, 41 Cohasset Road, is inside the boundary lines and not encroaching on the road.
Second. Motion has been made in second on Article S16. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends 700 to refer to town meeting and allow the petitioner to approach.
Is there a vote and recommendation of the Select Board?
The Select Board took no vote, we were unable to meet with the petitioner.
This is a petition article, is there anyone here to speak for the petitioner? Please state your name and your precinct.
Sheila McDonald, Precinct 2. So, I, I own 41 Cohasset Road, that's where my house is. And the boundary line goes right through the middle of my house, pretty much. So I did have the survey done since I attended the last meeting. And the surveyor says that the, the property from where the boundary line goes through my house out to the street, it's not public property, it's private property. And he did make, gave me some suggestions on what we could do to correct it. I do have a, I did bring a map with me. I didn't know, I don't know how complicated it would be to put it up there. Or is that, at this point, we can't do that?
Your map is a paper form, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's paper.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit late to put that up on the, up on the screen.
Okay.
So if I, if you might just indulge me for, for a moment.
Sure.
On this particular article. My understanding from what you're telling me, and I have looked at the engineering plan you had done, just indulge me for a moment.
Sure.
But what you're saying is that the property on which your house, part of your house may be located, is actually not town property. So it's a bit unclear to me and Town Council. Feel free to jump in and tell me I'm wrong. What you would have the town do, because I don't think that we can take a vote to transfer or change property if it's not land the town owns.
Correct. But I do, I mean, should I even state what I would like to accomplish now or hold off?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And it's going to be kind of hard for people to understand without visually seeing what I'm saying, but, so I'll just skip the first one because that doesn't matter. Cohasset Road from Cherokee Drive, this area is, if anyone's familiar, it's, I live right behind Lindsay's and the street that comes down, Lindsay's from Cranberry Highway between Maythaw Wilickers and Lindsay's is Cherokee Drive. So coming down Cherokee Drive, Cohasset Road from Cherokee Drive over to Choctaw, which is pretty much the, kind of like the main entrance into India Mount. So that area is, it's a private way with a variable width of like 20 feet. It has a drainage easement going down the middle of it that was put there in 1958. I know this, it sounds like mumbo jumbo without seeing what I'm talking about, but. So I'm asking that the town create a new layout for that private area from Cohasset Road from Cherokee down to Choctaw. And no taking would be required. And where the road layout is the widest, between Bungalow Lane and Boston Place, that's where my house on Cohasset Road kind of sticks out beyond the boundary lines. And so I'm asking that if the town could then abandon that portion and deed it to the adjacent lot owners, which is me resolving the issue with the encroachment into the existing layout at 41, which is 41 Cohasset Road.
All right, so if you can bear with us a moment, we're trying to get some sort of.
I can show you, you know, on the, I have a big map, I can show it to you, what the area, just so you can see what I'm saying.
We're trying to actually see if we can perhaps get some sort of map up there so it might.
Oh, yeah.
It might make, it might make more sense.
Yeah, maybe if, I don't know if you guys have a pointer, I could. Even, even Google, even a Google map. Yeah.
Oh, it's over that room. It can't be scanned in. Mascot is on his laptop.
Madam Moderator, we're getting close to the 10 o'clock. We may need an extension till he's finished the special.
So I'd ask for a, while we're waiting for the plan and all that.
Excuse me, Madam Moderator. Is it possible for this body to vote, a vote of confidence to Town Council to handle this matter in a matter that's expeditious?
So we have the, yeah, all right. Okay, because I think we might have a different opinion, but you go ahead. Okay. So I'm going to entertain a motion to go past the hour of 10 o'clock. And it calls for two-thirds vote. All those in.
I make that motion to go past.
Is there a second clock?
Madam Moderator, is it to finish this article or to finish everything?
I don't see us finishing everything.
That's why I just wanted to make sure. Or we could finish the special.
To finish, I understand that. Thank you for your point of order, Mrs. Exstrom. So I'll entertain a motion to go past the hour of 10 o'clock to finish Article S16.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor, please state aye. Any opposed, please state no. It passes by a majority. So we have, I believe, a plan, and you can correct me if I'm.
I have it.
If I'm wrong about this. We have a plan up on the screen which, oops, where'd it go? A plan up on the screen which I believe was done by your engineers. It might be a little bit easier for you to explain what you would like us to accomplish. And then I'm going to, once you do that, defer to Town Council. So what are you looking for us to do?
When he did say after this one, that's the original, the way it is right now? I'm so sorry. That's the original, the way it is right now. And as people can see, pretty much in, right in the center of it is that rectangle that goes this way and the line diagonally goes right through it. That's my house. And as you can see, the roadway kind of comes, doesn't come straight down, it kind of comes down like this and curves, I guess, to my right. But that area, where that portion of my house sticks out, that currently is considered private, a private way. So because that is the way it is, I cannot sell this house, which I'm trying to do. That's why I want to get it rectified as quickly as possible. So, so the area from Bungalow over to Boston Place, it actually, a little bit further, goes down to, to Chippewa, I think.
May I make, may I just, with your indulgence, may I just make a suggestion?
Yeah.
You've indicated to us that you have some sort of subsequent plan which might better show.
Yeah, it's right here.
What you're trying to establish. The voters are, we need to somehow, and I think if it's done by your engineer, I think we can get an electronic form of that, come back tomorrow, and I think it might make your presentation.
Okay.
Easier for the voters, so.
Did you say tomorrow?
I'm sorry, I'm a bit tired myself. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To the petitioner, here's what you're trying to do, see, there's your house, and then you got that boundary, it's 25 feet at the top to the center of the private way, 27 feet at the bottom. Basically, what you're trying to do is to get the town to give you that square of land into which your house projects, the 27 feet at the bottom, 27 feet across, and then 25 feet up at the north. That's what you're asking for. And the, the issue that we have with, with this right now is, you see that line where it says center line of the private way?
Yes.
See that line? There's a thing called derelict fee statute, which means that people who are on a private way own to the center line of the private way, which would mean that you would, under this map, I haven't seen your new one, you would own that piece of land that runs from the 27 feet into which your structure projects to the center line of the, of the private way.
That's how it is now, correct, that's.
Which means you own that, not the town of Wareham. And so while Town Meeting could vote to say, yeah, we give you what we have based on your own map, you don't, we don't have anything to give you.
Correct.
So if I'm correct, there's nothing for us to give to you and there's nothing for Town Meeting to vote on. So, you know, if you want to have your, get your new plan to us, to have your lawyer or engineer or broker talk to us.
Okay.
You know, we want to make this work for you. But right now, we don't own that, so we can't give you what we don't own.
Correct. So that's why I want to, in essence, let you take ownership of it and then you can deed it back to me.
That's.
I know, easier said than done, but that's, that's the only way to rectify the situation.
Yeah, yeah. That, that.
That's a horse of a different color.
Yeah, that is a totally horse of a different color, which.
Yeah.
In, in Town Meeting speak is outside of the scope of the article.
Correct.
But I think what I would, yeah. So I think what I'd entertain at this point, now, we already have a motion just to conclude this article after the hour of 10:00. I think at this point, what I consider, because we're not going to finish all the rest of it this evening, is a motion to adjourn the Town Meeting to tomorrow here at 7:00 PM. And at that time, we would take up your petition, Article S16.
Okay.
And in the meantime, perhaps, we could have some dialogue, perhaps with your engineer or if you have a title lawyer, and that may, may help us.
Okay.
So I'd entertain such a motion. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting until tomorrow at 7:00 PM to take up Article S16?
So moved.
Make the motion to recess. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?